The meeting to order for the Norfolk School Committee for September 9, 2014. Like we do every meeting, we'll read the mission statement. Norfolk Public Schools offers a safe, joyful, and challenging learning environment that meets the needs of our diverse students. Through school, family, and community partnerships, we provide an education that aspires lifelong learners and cultivates a caring and productive citizens of our ever-changing world. Roll call.
Jeff Chalmers.
Jeff Curry.
Paul Cochran.
Mark Flaherty.
Thomas Doyle.
Ingrid Lardie.
All right. Moving on, first order of business would be public comments.
I think we need a "public" first.
You're lacking in public comments.
You want to speak?
No.
No.
All right. Moving on to number two. Correspondence. I apologize, I managed to leave my actual copy of this at home, so. It made a good copy for me real quick. So we have donations to go over, which we'll have to vote on, which is the, from the school gift fund. So if you vote whether to accept this, it's a amount, a total of $3,600. That breaks down to $26 from the sixth grade promotion fund, which will be the purchase of two outside benches, I presume to go out here. And then something called the Raging Bear LLC.
Yes, a movie company borrowed, rented our parking lot for shooting in the town of Norfolk, and they paid $1,000 for renting the parking lot for the filming of Ted 2.
You guys know about that, Ted 2?
I knew they were filming in town. I didn't know they were filming here.
They were filming in town, not on school premises, but they borrowed the parking lot to park their vehicles for their.
Yeah, those are doing.
No, they said we'd pay you $1,000, and I said, "That sounds good."
No, we don't want your money.
We have things that we can do with that.
You and Anne's for cameo, or?
No, there you go.
All right, so we need a motion to accept those donations.
I make a motion?
Second?
A second of the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. All right, motion carries. All right, let's see, moving on to my report, which is budget subcommittee timeline. I'm just trying to make sure I've got everything all over here. This is primarily for you folks. All right, so you're on budget subcommittee, and Paul's on budget subcommittee as well. Okay. So just a little preliminary information, and Ingrid will jump in whenever, but I think the initial meeting, the plan would be in November.
Yep.
To kind of work through the budget, and just, Paul, primarily for your benefit, the first probably, you say, 15, 20 minutes of that meeting, give you a little bit of background, greater understanding of the process, the history of the budget going back, obviously. A number, it is sort of already decided, we've got various commitments that are already there, but there's obviously a number of things, a number of goals that we have, so we'll go over that as well. And then.
We'll also go over budget assumptions, so the cost of moving the contract forward, pending contracts with bus companies, things like that, anything that we know.
Yeah, the various fixed things, because those are all known commodities that we have going forward, and then there obviously, there still leaves a fair amount of stuff that we'll have to figure out from there and finagle and try to make things happen. And then we'll be ready to present that basically by the spring, April typically is the.
Yeah, we'll probably have, if we start in November with the initial planning, usually we try to have a preliminary budget to first present to the school committee, a draft of in January or February. The public hearing typically would need to be ready for the public hearing on our budget in March, and then as Thomas said, yes, it goes to the town for the spring town meeting, usually late April, early May, for the town meeting.
So basically, all the heavy lifting comes between November and March essentially.
Yep.
So we get everything done by then.
It's fun.
Okay. So just a little brief stuff on that. Then the regional school committee meeting, I had received a email, Jeff, I know you were copying on it as well, it was through two, three weeks ago or so, where they're going to have all the various committee.
Oh, yes.
Chair persons.
Yes.
Meet together, so it's all the king, so it'll be the King Philip School Committee, Rentham Plainville, myself, and the plan is to sort of have quarterly meetings to just make sure we're all working on the same page, we have the same goals.
Just initiated last year. They've tried to do it in the past, it hasn't worked.
Yeah, and the intent largely with it is to, a lot of it is for budget purposes, so we have a good understanding of the budget ramifications and budget problems or good things maybe people are having, so we're going to look at that. So just to make sure we have the line of communication opening between all the folks, so that's sort of the intent of it. As Jeff mentioned, it's something that never got off the ground, I think last year was the first year?
Yeah.
Last year was one of the first years. They've tried to do it in the past, and the problem we had is either they had boards that just were on different pages, but concerning what happened about two years ago with the budget, it all already came to the point where we need to be on the same page with everybody. We're essentially doing the same thing except different regions or different school systems.
Right.
Why we can't we all be on the same page and potentially share resources if possible, and Ingrid's been great about trying to keep everyone on the same page from a superintendent and principal standpoint. She does a lot of collaboration with the other towns.
So this actually goes back to the subcommittee folks, is that actually will give you a better understanding of what you're going to face, because then we'll be aware of any surprises or anything that could come down the road that we need to take into consideration, so just for what that's worth. That's pretty much all I have.
Okay. So move forward. Great. So obviously, we had a pretty packed agenda in August, and we just had a couple of meetings, a couple of weeks between meetings because of the way the calendar felt. We had a late meeting in August and an early meeting in September. So most of the focus of my report for you tonight is just on updating on the opening of school. I want to, I have Mike Yang here, who's going to give an update on the technology projects that were conducted over the summer, give you some budget information on those and the status of those projects. Toby Lyons will be here to do an update on the facilities and opening of school facilities. And we do have one action item for the committee tonight, and that's the recommendation for appointing a new school physician. So I'll start with that. Every year, we are required to appoint a school physician. In your packet, you have a copy of the job description, but that person primarily provides consultation services to the school for medical needs as they arise. They also will help us in developing policies and procedures that relate to healthcare and health services for students, and they also provide physical examinations for any students that move in the district that don't have access to private healthcare, and we need to get immunizations and physical exam records. So that is generally the responsibilities of the school physician. For the last several years, Dr. Henry DeAngelo has been our consulting physician. We've had good experiences with him, so I'm recommending to the committee that we reappoint Dr. Henry DeAngelo as a school physician for the Norfolk Schools for this year, beginning July 1st officially through June 30th, and $2,000 is the stipend that we paid him last year and has been pretty much the standard rate of pay.
All right, I make a motion that we approve it?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hey, also in your packet, I just sent you a brief copy of some notes regarding the opening of school. I'm happy to say that overall, it was a very smooth opening. Buses have been running on time, we have had very few bus complaints, students were in the buildings, both HOD and the Freeman Kennedy, the first day of school, and settled into classrooms pretty quickly by 9:05. We are fully staffed at this time, we have no open positions for the, as far as the public schools. We do have a couple of assistant positions open in SAC that our SAC program director is in the process of interviewing and filling, but we're fully staffed from the school perspective. At the last school committee meeting, I did inform you that we had a late summer resignation of a fifth grade teacher. I was able to hire somebody that week. The association waived the seven-day timeline for posting the position, and I was able to fill it immediately. So we were really lucky, we hired a woman named Lori Ann Wardner. She has an undergraduate degree from Endicott College and a master's in reading from Bridgewater State. She's a great addition, she's been teaching third grade and for the past few years in Holbrook, Massachusetts, but resides in this area and was looking for something closer to home, so their losses definitely are gain, and we're happy to have her on our fifth grade team. I also wanted to inform the committee that in the new teacher's contract, we added new positions this year for lunch monitors in both cafeterias. Those programs, it's been going very, very well. The first week of school, the principals and assistant principals were in the cafeteria for almost all the lunches with the monitors, providing training, talking to the kids about school rules, procedures, making sure everything ran smoothly, and they're starting to fade that off. There's still a very strong administrative presence in both cafeterias at the lunchtimes right now, just until we get our new staff up and running and comfortable with the procedures. But overall, it's gone really well, so that's gone, you know, that's been a positive. Another thing that we are pretty deep into at this point is the, we are, every six years, the Massachusetts Department of Ed audits districts for compliance with federal regulations, so that's your special education laws, both federal and state. Title I is, we're going to be audited for civil rights and English language learner programs. So as part of that mandate, we had an orientation meeting today. We had a member from the Department of Ed here to kind of talk about what that's going to entail. It is somewhat of a Herculean task, I would say, preparing for this audit. There's an enormous amount of documentation that they require, a lot of records that get reviewed, a lot of policies. They will be onsite for the week of, we've changed the date because of the mask conference, so they're coming the following week, they'll be onsite for the week of November 10 through 14. During that time here, they'll be interviewing a wide range of staff members, they also will be sending out surveys to parents. We also are required to put an ad in the local paper, just letting people know that the Department of Ed is onsite. If any community members would like to speak with a representative from the department, they have a right to call and schedule that. So we're in the process of getting that ready, but I did just want to take a minute to thank our administrative team, who have spent countless hours uploading documents to the web portal that hasn't been always smooth and efficient and getting that together. So a special thanks to our administrative team. Roxanne Verdoe, our Director of Human Resources, she's primarily responsible for the civil rights part of the audit, because a lot of it refers to employment practices. Anna Tupper and Heather Lufti, who's our, Anna Tupper's our Special Education Director, Heather Lufti's our Team Chair. They worked a lot of hours over the summer preparing for that. And the building principals, Lisa Altham-Hickey, Kelly Whitmore from Freeman Kennedy, Linda Balfour, and Anita Mecklenburg from HOD, they put a lot of time into this project, so I just wanted to recognize their efforts to date. Process-wise, after the site visit in November, we will have a preliminary exit meeting with the review team, they'll share with us the preliminary findings, and then we can expect to see a draft report, they said within four to six weeks, on the civil rights and special education portions of the audit. The ELL review is done by a different team, and it takes about six months to get that report. So we'll have a draft report, we have a 10-day public comment period, so we can respond to any of the findings in the report, we can correct factual inaccuracies, and then once they finalize the report, it is available to the public. So that was that. And then last, I wanted to say, the state did approve, I wrote two other grants over the summer, a new Title I grant and a new Title II A grant. Both have certain restrictions as to what those programs will fund. Title I provides direct support services to students, and it has to be based on a needs assessment and a program review from the prior year. Last year, Title I monies were used to support the offset part of the budget salary for the developmental math teacher at HOD. The results of her program review over the course of last year was that teachers and students made some really, students made some really nice gains. Teachers felt that their gains in math fact fluency were not as strong as they could be, so what we've done is add an additional paraprofessional staff to really shore up that program and to be able to provide some additional intervention services with students in that fact fluency area. Title II A is a professional development grant, and we have about $16,000 from that, and we are using it to fund data literacy training for all of our staff. We have a new English Language Arts Assessment Plan, new proficiency benchmarks, and we're going to be launching data teams for every grade level so that we can look at student achievement data more consistently and collaboratively across the district. So we're using that to fund a lot of the data training. It's an onsite graduate-level course. And then there have been a tremendous amount of facilities and technology projects that were completed over the summer, so I wanted to have some time today for both Mike Yang, our Technology Director, and Toby Lyons, our Facilities Director, to kind of walk through those with you and respond to any questions the committee might have. As I say, we'll have a budget impact going forward in terms of our capital planning and long-range needs. All right, so I will begin by introducing Michael Yang, our Technology Director.
All right, Mike.
So I'm going to move to the side so Mike can have my microphone.
You can use that microphone up there.
No, I don't want to, yeah, I'll let him sit, and I'll move to the side. There you go, Mike.
Thank you.
Big C. All right, so the, this summer, we did a lot of the technology updates and upgrades, and the main theme is actually the security for schools and also the backbone infrastructure. I'm going to start highlighting the district project, meaning the project that will affect both schools. The biggest addition that we have is actually fiber optic network for our entire town, which means, so all-town seven buildings, so we're two schools, Freeman Kennedy and HOD, followed by Town Hall of Public Safety, COA, which is the Council on Aging, DPW, Town Library, and, yep, those are the seven, I think, yep. All seven buildings are connected directly through our internal fiber optic network. What that does is the, it allows us to transfer information in very, very high speed. Let me give you an example, the copying a 12-gigabyte file from Freeman, from HOD to Freeman Kennedy, 12 gigabytes equivalent of about four DVD movies. We copied that in less than 50 seconds, which normally would take us hours and hours, sometimes 12 gigabytes could take us possibly even a whole day before going from school to school. You know, it sounds very fancy, but it's actually needed, especially nowadays, everything's multimedia. We need that bandwidth to carry information between two schools. And what that also means is that we can consolidate our infrastructure, meaning that, which I will mention later on, is actually the, our security system, our video camera system, and our servers can all be linked together and very, very effectively, and telephone system as well. And with this fiber optic network, also, we upgraded the internet service along with the network switches. Internet service will basically consolidate to one very fast internet service for our, for both schools, and that's coming out from here, Freeman Kennedy School. And because this is also the shelter for the town, one of the shelters, so that's why I decided to put the internet in here with a power backup. So when, if there's any kind of storms, if people need to stay here, they have access to internet, so. All right, so the, and the small project for the district is the copiers, you know, it's a small project, with both three copiers, one for superintendent's office and also one for each school. And what we're placing are very aging copiers, they have approximately, one of them has 1.3 million copies on it, the other one is 2.3, so that figure is time to go, so. And now, the individual school projects, the, it's the, HOD has the most projects done because of the school being about 20 years old. So we did the access control system, meaning the key badge system. The new system that, it hasn't started yet, because we're waiting for the main circuit board to come in. What that allows us to do is to have consolidated management system for both schools, meaning we can configure in one location, meaning from Freeman Kennedy, all the changes will trickle down to both schools, and there's a redundancy built in as well. For example, if, for any reason that the, we lost communication between two schools, the key pass system can operate independently, even though the main controller is right here. And that goes with the telephone system as well. That project has been completed. Now we can do inter-school dialing. Before, we go calling from one school to another, we have dialed the external phone number to get to each school, they say from Freeman Kennedy to HOD and vice versa. Now it's direct dialing, four-digit dialing. The first, Freeman Kennedy starts with one, one whatever, if we're here, and HOD is two, whatever, two thousand and one thousand numbers, so.
I just have to say what a huge honor it is, because if I had to get a message to one of the principals, I had to go through the phone directory dialing, press one to talk to them, and press three, it'd take forever, so this is much more efficient.
And now the telephone itself has the directory listing built in, so they say, you know a person's name, but you don't want a phone number, you can simply scroll through the listings, say, oh, I know the, I find the person, and press dial, and it will take you through that.
Great.
The, another project actually has to do with the projection system for Freeman Kennedy, even though the school is brand-new, but there were some issues with the projection system in the cafeteria itself. During the daytime, the cafeteria is very, very bright, and what that means is because of the brightness coming, sunlight coming through the window, we reflect off the big 19-foot screen, so it will make any projection to be almost, almost not usable in a way. Yeah, exactly, it's very bright and a lot of reflections, so what we, the project was, what we did was to move the screen, actually, we switched out the 19-foot screen for a 16-foot screen, and we moved about a foot and a half back. And also, that particular screen is rear projection, meaning instead of projecting from the front, it's coming from the back. So the, there is a short throw projector mounted on the back of the stage, when it's not being used, it's hidden by the curtain. So let's say there's any kind of the play going on, we can just close the curtain and nobody will ever see the projector. And that giant screen, the 19-foot screen, has been moved to the gym, Freeman Kennedy Gym, behind the basketball hoop. That screen is actually perfect for the size of the gym, actually. It's too big for the cafeteria, but it's just right for the gym. So in a gymnasium space, we'll use portable projector to project the image, so. And the last project is actually the panic buttons. It has been completed here at Freeman Kennedy and tested. What the button, what the buttons do, actually, when you press the button, it will trigger the magnets that holds the four corridors door, whether shut the door but not lock in, so that, we have been working with the fire department, the police department in how to handle the, whether the door should be locked or not, and the flow of the, when there's emergency. And by pushing a button, also notify the Norfolk dispatch directly, right? As soon as we hit the button, within 10 seconds, the phone call will come in and say, "What's going on?" We sent, we got a signal saying that the panic button has been pushed, what's going on? So, and HOD will have the same capability, but that goes with the installation of the security, the keypad system, they go together, so that is still pending.
Where are they located in the school?
Pardon?
Where are they located?
For Freeman Kennedy, three main areas, the superintendent's office, the school's main office, and the SAC area.
Apparently anywhere there's a major door, you press into the school.
Okay.
Exactly, yep. So when there's a high traffic and, you know, it has to do with kids and parents, and, you know, everybody says something's wrong, they have access to the button. And HOD, I'm currently still working with the SAC director, Tony Davis, and determine where exactly, with the best location. But now, what's determined is the main office, spare area, and cafeteria area, so. Oh, and I forgot, also, the, one last project is actually the video surveillance system, which we already have it here at Freeman Kennedy on hallways and exterior access, meaning exterior doors. HOD will have the same thing, we added, that project is 99% complete, and there's some tweaking we need to do, but there were 14 cameras added. Yep, so at least two per hall, two per hallways, so they can cross paths to see both directions.
So no blind spots, huh?
Exactly, no blind spots, and also the exterior access, so.
Ingrid had mentioned that there was a budget, you know, impact from all this, can you explain what that is?
I can respond to that.
Yeah.
So the screen projection changes were out of the building project, and that was approved by the building committee, so those don't have, and they affect on our district budget, because that came out of the building project money. The security cameras and installation were paid out at the end of last year, so that, we anticipated we were going to need to do some of these projects moving into this year, but we were able to complete some of them last year. So that's sort of the, it takes some of the capital pending items off. We really wanted to address, I should probably speak on the mic. I have a search.
Of course.
Public.
Thank you, Mike.
We really wanted to address immediately anything with the security impact. So the phone system upgrade, we were able to do partially out of last year, partially out of this year's money. The phone system has an additional security feature, so at HOD, they now have the same capacity that they do at Freeman Kennedy, so it is the inter-school dialing, but it also gives every single teacher the capacity to make an all-call announcement through the school and lock down the school if there was an emergency, if somebody was entering the building from the side. Any teacher can do an all-call page with their, with their immediate phone in the classroom. So those projects, a couple of them were split funded, some with the end-of-year capital money last year and some with the beginning of this year. But I think we're in really good shape fiscally in terms of the capital projects that we needed to complete, because we were able to get most of the security needs addressed. So that would be sort of the budget impact, it's going to free us to look at some other sort of facilities maintenance. We had a consultant come in, and I can get you copies of the report, I think the existing members have it, that did a long-range, five, 10, 15-year facilities maintenance plan for us. So the budget impact is that some of the things that we were originally thinking were going to have to be embedded in our next year's capital, now we're off the table, and we can start to address some of those facilities needs, primarily at the HOD, because the building's aging, it's 20 years old. So we were happy to get the security, we, you know, the new camera systems is critical at HOD. The security system allows us to have better visual view of anybody entering the building. The old cameras had a real narrow field, so the secretaries buzzing people in couldn't see the whole area, which the new cameras address.
I know there was some talk during that security, security audit, basically, and with the portable panic buttons, you know, like.
They're still being field-tested.
Okay.
By different vendors, so the ones that we have are fixed panic buttons.
Right.
They tie into our fire alarm system, so as Mike said, if we were to put, and we've put them strategically by any main entrance point, so if a secretary in the main office had somebody trying to enter the building that they didn't buzz in, and they pushed that button, all of the wings would be locked down, and it sends an automatic lockdown message across the system. So that's where we're starting. There are some companies piloting portable panic buttons that a teacher could take out to recess, things like that, but they're still in the pilot stage, and I'm not sure how solid the technology is yet, but we could look at that.
I know that he was saying that he had brought it up, and so I figured, you know, maybe it's an app for a phone, maybe it's, you know, a different device that carried out, you know?
To be honest, this is a really huge field right now, and there's a lot of new technology coming out, so we'll have to.
Okay.
And then we have to make choices as to what's really appropriate. I mean, when our teachers go out to recess, they take walkie-talkies and they have cellphones, and all of, everybody can dial 911 from a cellphone, so how much better is an emergency panic, you know, so we have to look at all of those things. And we do work with the local police, and we work with a company, Metrolec, which is the Metropolitan Law Enforcement Council that provides advice and direction on that.
With respect to the district projects, is there any support or maintenance that has not been accounted for in the coming budget, in the budget year that we're in?
We had to reduce the extraordinary maintenance line at HOD in the last budget, I think, I don't know if everybody remembers, but we had to reduce it by $20,000 to offset some of the cost of the contractual obligations. I think we're going to be okay, because we were able to complete some of the projects, some came in under what we originally estimated in terms of the security and things like that, and we were able to complete some of them last year, so not at this point. There are some projects that we did not budget for, because we knew we didn't have the revenue that do need to be done. There's, in the facilities report, the recommending that we recommission all the systems at HOD at this point, heating and all of the systems, that's about a $20,000 cost. We didn't budget, we put it off because we didn't have the revenue, but we might be able to bring some of those things back. to bring some of those things back on the table. You know, and I think that probably at one of our first budget meetings, we should take a look at that long-range plan and, and talk about what we have the capacity to maybe do this year and, and sort of stage that in our budgeting.
Okay.
All right. Any questions for Mike before I turn it over to Toby Lyons?
No. Michael did a wonderful job the last, over the last three years, I've seen a significant difference between what we had and where we are now, both with facilities as well as resources, so thank you, Mike. I know you spent a tremendous amount of time.
Yes, and I think Mike's worked really hard at making the whole town have better continuity, you know, between all the different town buildings, so it's worked much better, so...
That's about half of it. It did have a downside.
He's working very, very, very hard, so thank you, Mike.
We're planning on public safety expansion, you know, the town must consolidate nine-one-one system.
It's your business, Greg.
Take some time for yourself.
Thank you.
Sit down, relax.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
All right, I'm going to introduce Toby Lyons, who's going to do the update on the facilities.
Hi, Jeff, and I know Thomas and I know Mark, I don't know the new Jeff or the new...
Paul.
Paul yet. Toby Lyons.
Hey, Toby, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Supervisor of Buildings, Facilities Director, whatever you want to call me.
Building guru.
We, we, we had some very, as Ingrid said, we had some very significant projects over the summer, especially at H O D. You've got a list of them there and I'll, we'll just go over them a little bit. The biggest one, I'd say by far, was the fire sprinkler system at the H O D. It's a twenty-one-year-old system. I don't know how technical you guys are with stuff, but it, it, the fire sprinkler system over there has basically split into two. It has a dry, two dry zones and three wet zones. Wet zones are full of water all the time, so when the sprinkler goes off. Dry zones are full of air all the time because they're in, they go through places that tend to freeze, so they have to be full of air. And when, when the sprinkler goes off, it, well, the dry zones over there apparently were put together with substandard materials and we've been springing leaks in the dry zones. You'd think that the wet zones would, would leak, but no, it's the dry zones and it's because what's rust, what's corrosion? It's, it's, it's iron oxide. What's oxide? It's oxygen. Things don't rust when they're full of water, you get a little bit of rust, but when they're full of air, you've got, and, and you develop pin, pinholes that start leaking and stuff around it. And so for about the last ten years or so, we've been chasing these leaks around the dry zones of the, of the Freeman, I mean, of the, excuse me, H O D school. And the committee finally decided to ask for the money to, to, first of all, find out exactly what it would cost to replace the rest of the, the system that needs to be done and, and then go ahead and, and get the money from the town. It was, it was funded by Town Meeting. And this year, we had an eighty thousand dollar project during the summer to replace all the mains in the, in the dry system over there, which was, was a tremendous project that necessitated bringing the, the summer programs that we normally have at the H O D school, they brought them over here to this school because they kind of basically tore the, tore the school apart. And it, it went very well and it's completed and it's, it's successful. And now, you know, they don't fill dry systems with air, they fill them with nitrogen. Because there's no rust in nitrogen, there's no oxygen in there. So we have a nitrogen generator that fills it, all that, that is filled with, with nitrogen, which is, it's great. And again, that was funded by Town Meeting and it went very, very successfully. Now, along with that, as long as we're tearing the place apart, we, we replaced the fire alarm panel over there, which needed replacing, and it was a great time to do it because things weren't, everything was kind of down and out anyway. And we replaced the fire alarm panel over there. And again, that was with Town Meeting, capital request, capital money. So we've got, we've got a now, and the, the good thing about the panel we have now is it's non-proprietary. We, the panel we had before was proprietary, so when, when something went wrong, you had to call a certain company. And the certain company was up in New Hampshire and it, it was probably four hours travel time added on to whatever you wanted, plus, plus the, the, our fire chief didn't really get along with, with those people up there, so that made it even worse. So, and he, he had a great idea, let's get a non-proprietary panel, because the panel was junk anyway, so rather than get a new, a new panel from a, people that, that didn't get along with our fire chief, we got a panel that, that he's happy with and is non-proprietary and we can get any local electrician to work on it, can get parts for it and everything else, program it. And again, that's, and the good thing, that was old technology we replaced, it, it was a non-addressable system, meaning that it just had zones. If the fire alarm went off, it said it was zone six, well, there's, you know, ten rooms in zone six. This new panel is, is addressable. Right now, the devices that are connected to that panel are not addressable yet, so we're hoping, you know, we're talking about getting money and, and everything. That would be my next, the big project for next summer would be to replace the devices, the smoke detectors, the, the horn strobes, the, the pull stations, et cetera, et cetera, which incidentally need to be replaced anyway. They've only got a life cycle of about ten years and we're going on twenty with them. So we really need to replace those devices. Then we can replace them with addressable devices that will tell the panel exactly where the, you know, if it goes off, the fire department comes and they says, oh, it's, it's, that's right in that room and it'll be a little thing right there, they know where to go and they know all that. That's what addressability is. Each device reports back to the panel on its own, whereas now, they, they, they report back as a group, say, we're in zone ten, but come and find us, there's something going on here in zone ten. It's a lot easier, a lot better for the fire department if they know exactly what room that, that's going off on.
Do we have any sense of the various other things you need to replace, the horns, strobes, and the smoke detectors? Do we have any guess coming in for us, like budget-wise, as we prepare for it?
No, that, that's the next, the next thing, we'll have, have the engineer go in and, 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 yeah. We, now with, with the new, with the new system we have now, at least we've got a, an inventory of, of devices. In fact, I don't think they'll have to go through and map out where the devices are to find out, because it won't require any wiring, it'll just require taking, you know, taking that horn strobe off the wall and put a different one on there. The wiring and everything else in the panel is, is all set, so it should be a pretty straightforward budget.
It shouldn't be too bad, though.
No, it should be, we had to place the panel first.
That makes sense.
But...
That's a big item, someone has to do that one now, so that's fine.
Yeah. And, but it shouldn't be, well, it shouldn't be too hard to find a number. I can't say that it shouldn't be a high number, but it shouldn't be too hard to find that number.
Sense.
Well, I can say it. All right, well, I don't want to lie.
Not having to marry.
I don't want to lie here, I'm on TV.
Would that be an item for, for a town capital committee or a school?
It depends on the price. If it's over twenty-five thousand, then yes, it is under us.
Yeah. So it's close, you know, make it...
It's close, yeah, they, they, the capital committee.
Thirty-five hundred stroblecs.
We'll order extra, just to get it in. Domestic hot water heater over there, again, twenty-one years old, direct-fired oil heater, if anybody knows anybody. I mean, I remember when we occupied the building twenty-one years ago and the guy, my, my oil guy looked at it and he goes, oh, you poor sucker, that thing ain't going to last ten years. He said, those just don't last. Well, we lasted twenty-one years and we, we replaced it this year. It's a big chunk of money, but we replaced it with electric water heaters and people said, why are you going electric? Well, because the town has a municipal agreement with the, with all the solar panels they have down on, on, and in fact, I was told by the, yeah, I was told by the, the building commissioner, you should go electric, don't, you know, don't go, you know, oil electric, oil, oil's going nowhere but, but north, you know, at this point. So we, we've got electric water heater system now over there, which costs a lot less than the, the oil heater that it replaced. We originally had prices that were just sky, sky-high to replace the existing one with another oil, direct oil fired. And with the electric, even with the, the new electric work that we had to do, luckily it was right next to the electric room. I mean, it's, it's literally fifteen feet away from, from, so I mean, those big, there are big copper wires like that, probably cost us an arm and a leg, but, and again, that was, that was Town Meeting and it's all installed, it's all working great. Those were the big three over at H O D that, that took up our whole summer. We also, in the playground, the, the small playground that's in the Kundi Forest Conservation Land behind the school there, we have one smaller of the, of the playgrounds over there and it, it has wood, the old wood chip surfacing, safety surfacing, that needs to be replenished every three or four years, and this was one of the years, so that was a couple grand in there and to put, to replenish that, that stuff, so. Over here at the Freeman Kennedy, it's getting dark, but there's, there's a new shade structure right out here and picnic benches underneath and picnic benches over here by the media center. That was done with building committee money, was part of the building project. It was, it was always, it was always in the plan, that's why they put that concrete pad out there, it just had never gotten done. And so they did that over the, this summer. Likewise, additional, some gym equipment that, that was always part of the plan and never seemed to have gotten done. There's a horizontal ladder and a spider climber, which is a beauty. And I have no idea what the, yeah, yeah, I haven't even, I don't know what it looks like. But it wasn't, but anyway, that got installed over the summer, again, with, with, part of the building project. A warranty issue that was, it was quite significant, it was just a small repair, but it was the, in the, the playground here, had a few, like sinkholes between, it, it's funny, you could tell it was between jurisdictions, it was between the, it was between the, the site, site contractor who did the paving and stuff and, and the playground contractor who did the playground, and there was a couple of little sinkholes where, right where you walk in, and they were kind of saying, oh, that's not mine, oh, that's, that's not mine. Well, you know, you could kind of, you know, it was, it was the site guy, you, you could tell the, that the sidewalk was collapsing. But they spent the day, they jackhammered it all out, they did it good, they didn't just come in and, and stuff some stuff in there, they, they jackhammered it out and made it right and then put it in. Part of it was, was the timing, the way we, the way that, that whole thing happened, remember? It was, you know, the playground went there and then went there and then it went back there and it was, you remember? And so, yeah. So, so the time between, you know, I, I, I really think that the time that, that the site contractor paved that parkway there until the time they actually buttered up against it with the playground was, just sat there too long and probably got undermined and whatever. Yeah. But anyway, that was warranted, didn't cost us anything. And again, the other small playground at this, at this location, which is the same thing, which is one that we moved, we moved from probably where we're sitting here now before we, we built the new school. There was a couple playgrounds, one they dismantled and brought over to the Kundi Forest and one they dismantled and brought over out here and it was, it served as our only playground for a year over near the T-ball field. And again, that needed new wood chips, no replenishment, so that was that. And that's what we did this summer, among a lot of other things. Is there any other, other questions or anything?
Thanks, Toby.
Welcome. Nice meeting you guys.
Nice meeting you too. Thank you.
Don't be, don't be strangers if you get any questions.
No way to get me, yeah, yeah. Don't ask me to explain this. What is a spider climber?
It's really cool. There, if you take a walk in the gym and they're on the back lawn...
Toby, you're going to do a demonstration later, right?
I'm going to add a word.
Okay.
The problem with that equipment was actually that it was ordered as part of the building project from a particular vendor and then the building took a year to be constructed. By the time the equipment was delivered, the vendor had terminated installations, so they didn't, they wouldn't install it, they just sold the equipment and we couldn't find another vendor to come put it up. So that was what the holdup was, but we got it done. All right, so we have some committee reports.
All right. Jeff, King Philip.
Last meeting we had was on September second and we had a couple of things we went through as far as building walkthroughs and open days, successful, just like we were around here. Couple of things that we had, we addressed a school committee goal setting, we had some goal setting from last summer that we wanted to finish up, that we made some changes to for this summer, some engineering things that we had, one of them, one of which was for the middle school. We have a, a new contract we've signed with Gale Associates for the middle school sanitary and water line project, so I'll give you guys an update as that's going. We also basically contracted with a new physician for the schools, just like we have here, which is pretty commonplace in the course of, you know, timeframe. And the last thing we talked about, which was in the literature that you guys through the emails, is King Philip's, we do our middle school improvement plans, so there are several pages of, of improvement plans in different sections. If you guys have any questions or you want any information, just give me a call and I'll get into additional information if you need it.
All right. Thank you. Policy?
I'm going to actually, Jeff has some points he wants to bring up on some of the stuff, so I'm going to actually let him do the...
Jeff leading off on policy then.
Yeah, this, this is just on, the, the two documents that we're going to do the first readings this evening, just, I'm not sure that we want to read through every word during the meeting of these, but there were a couple I wanted to bring your attention to, two, two small changes, material changes, and then we had one question that Ingrid's going to refer back with respect, under the background checks, with respect to prior determinations on unfavorable determinations and whether or not we should have some language in there for this, but I can bring your attention to the two particular...
Yeah, what were the changes?
On, excuse me, the last, second to last page of the background checks, the last sentence of the second to last paragraph, the word compliant should actually be complaint, so I'll just take the liberty of reading the sentence. "In addition, any applicant for employment may answer no record with respect to any inquiry relative to prior arrests, court appearances, and adjudications in all cases of delinquency or as a child in need of service, which did not result in a," it's listed now as compliant and I believe it should be complaint, "transferred to the Superior Court for Criminal Prosecution." So, so that's, that's the first of the material changes. The second is actually in the student discipline section. And that is, again, second to last page, top sentence, and I'll read the full sentence. "The student or parent shall file a notice of appeal with the superintendent within the time period noted above, see principal's hearing, suspension of more than ten days. If the appeal is not timely filed, the superintendent may deny the appeal or may allow the appeal." Instead of the word "in," it should be "at his or her discretion for good cause." Okay. So those are the two material changes.
And just to expand in terms of the legal question, this policy is from the MASC legal department and then we, you know, incorporated some pieces from our old prior policies. There is a question that, with the new fingerprint law and there's something that people have to get a fingerprint check done, we've received our results and we have to do a suitability determination. So I review the results, determine whether or not the applicant or employee is suitable to work in the public school and make a decision on that, and so we either say they're suitable or unsuitable. There is, in the law, you are allowed to rely on a prior suitability determination from another employer. So if there was another, if, if it was an applicant that was working in another public school who filed the fingerprint check, I can request at, with their consent, a copy of that school's suitability determination and we are allowed to accept that if we choose. We do not have to, but we can accept it. The question that arose today is, the policy from, from MASC is very clear about that, that, you know, compliant with the law, we're allowed to accept that. However, it does, it's a little ambiguous if we can decline based on another district's unsuitability determination or if we have to run our own, if we're, if it's an unsuitable decision. So we're going to get clarification on that.
Thank you for clarifying.
It's just the way it's worded, it leaves that question open a little bit.
And then for student policy goals... And then for, uh, student policy goals, uh, it's just really an incidental change. Uh, remember last year when we had to go and add in gender identity to all the discrimination type stuff? Well, it looks like, uh, there was one policy that was kind of missed, and that which was, uh, the student policies goals, uh, J-E, JA dash E. So Ingrid just went through, she added that, but she also noticed that all of the wording works, it says gender identity, color, national origin, religion, uh, disability, sex orientation, limited English speaking ability, were all in there, but all in different orders, so she went through and put them all in the same order, so it all read the same way with the added of, uh, gender identity.
Okay.
So, it's an incidental change, so it doesn't really...
So that one doesn't need to be reading?
Yeah, we just have to vote to approve it.
Um, so we can do that?
Yes.
Yeah, we can go in order if you want, on the background checks, ADDA, the first reading for, did anyone else have any other comments beyond the incidental changes that were...
Just an adding of a, of a letter, section nine. "Adults serving on athletic regulatory, regulatory boards shall fairly represent the interests of both male and female students." It says AN, male and, just put a D.
That's in the, that's in the...
Which one?
Student policies goals, one we gave today.
Yes, okay.
Section nine at the very end, second to la, second to last word, instead of AN, AN, it's AND.
Oh, yeah.
Good catch.
Great. But on ADDA, the background checks, was there any other additions?
Legal stuff.
Nope. So we'll move that to a second reading at the next meeting?
Yeah, so just move on. These are both first readings, correct?
Yes.
For both of, this and the student discipline are first readings, so that'll go to second reading?
Yeah, so move this to after second reading.
Okay. Any changes on the student discipline JIC policy, other than the... So I'll make the corrections that Jeff noted in terms of the typo and the, the misspelling, um, and we'll bring those forward for second meeting at the next meeting. The student policies one, as, um, Mark mentioned, um, reflects, in August 2012, we updated all of our anti-discrimination policies, which would be, um, the harassment policies, nondiscrimination, employment, equal access to educational opportunities, so all the policies we were aware of that had the nondiscrimination clause in it, um, to reflect the new law, which required us to add the word gender identity instead of just gender. This policy, the, um, JA E, um, was overlooked at the time, so as Mark said, um, it's, it's to be compliant with the federal regulations in, in terms of the nondiscrimination sentence. So the only thing changed in this policy, um, for reading is that we added the word identity after gender. Um, and again, as Mark said, um, this is an old policy, and in each paragraph that referenced the nondiscrimination, um, statement, it was worded differently, so I just made those consistent throughout. So, um, this would be an incidental change, because we're not changing the content of the policy, just the wording, um, of that one particular line, so it doesn't require three readings, so if the committee is comfortable, um, we would approve the incidental changes, and those would become active effective immediately.
Toby, vote now.
Yeah, you can vote on that now.
So I make a motion, uh, actually, we're going to start with, well, we don't have to do a motion for the first readings, do we?
Nope.
No.
Just to approve the incidental changes.
Incidental changes.
I make a motion that we approve the incidental changes to JA dash E.
I second that.
Call favor?
Aye.
All right, so that's it for policy, correct?
Yeah.
Uh, Jeff, back to you for technology, you got anything?
That's it, everything that Mike basically brought up.
Can't top that?
Can't top it, he's got everything.
Very good, moving on there. Uh, the building has not met since our last meeting, right?
No, no, um, we did meet to sign, to approve invoices.
We did before the last meeting anyway, so...
Yep. Nothing changed, other than that the playground surfacing was repaired, um, since then.
All right, so nothing on that, so, uh, new business, anybody have anything?
I got nothing.
The only thing I had got, and this is sort of off-book a little bit here, is I had, Jeff and you were Trummers, I mean, were part of this, um, I've got to find this, hold on one second, here, yes, of course, I... Anyway, the, uh, school committee has been challenged.
Uh-oh.
Two nailed it, nice bucket challenge.
I'm exempt on that one.
Bucket challenge, and I've seen a video, so, uh, original Jeff, as we shall call him, is off the hook, uh, he was doused by a front loader.
Yes, we were.
Didn't mess around with you guys, so...
It was, I didn't think the water was going to stop.
Yeah, that was no, uh, oh, here it is. So Anne Marie Martin is the one that sent the email, um, so that came out to us, so there is a challenge out there to the sister committees of Plainville, Norfolk, and Rantham. Um, I would suggest if we wish to do this, we do this before it becomes cold.
Yes.
Infinitely worse, so I wanted to just...
Come on.
All right, fine, all right. Why, man, you're doing January then?
January 1st.
Oh, there you go.
I have the video of me already doing the ice bucket challenge, but I will do this one again.
Yeah, let's say this is a different call of life, so, um, so, uh, Jeff, you're certainly more than welcome to do it again, but you're obviously excused duty if you...
Hey, I'm going to have fun watching you guys.
Um, or you could just throw things at us, that's fine. So, did the four of us wish to accept said challenge?
Yes, I do.
Not everybody at once.
Yeah, I accept, um...
It's requiring you to put the glasses down, you're...
They've got a real opinion here.
But as far as giving to the ALS, is that something a school, we can do that? Is that something that's...
We can do it as a school committee?
I don't believe you can, that was something we had to make an individual decision whether or why we do that, but, obviously, that's fine. Um, I think we can worry about that individually, but, uh, I guess...
Or as we do it, we can just challenge Dr. Lardy, and then...
I have done it. I have done it as well, but I may have to do it again, I guess.
Do we have evidence of that? Is there any video of her getting doused?
Yeah, as I say, I got a video.
I've got a video!
I have some, believe me.
I guess the only thing I would say to, to close this portion out is, uh, I, I like the fact you guys used the front loader, so, um...
Holy smoke.
He's not running it, fum under it.
Come on!
Aren't you trust me?
No, we don't.
No. Let me think about it.
It was at least original, so I think if we're going to do it, I think at least somewhat clever, um, so Jeff Curry will make you do that?
I accept, oh, I, I'm going to figure out the originality.
Yeah.
We'll involve the spider climber somehow, that's what...
Um, all right, well, let's figure that out, but I'd say I'm going to email back saying we will accept the challenge, and I think, you want to say by next school meeting, so by the time we set that, next month, we, we get this over with?
Sure.
Um, for, despite Paul's wish to do it in freezing cold weather, I would prefer to do it also slightly warmer. So, fine, challenge accepted. That's all I had for new business, unless anyone else has anything.
I just had one thing. Donna Chisholm, our business assist, assistant manager, asked if it would be okay with the committee for the next couple of weeks if we do a weekly warrant, because in the beginning of the year, we have so many invoices coming in, and we have to renew all our contracts with the, you know, open purchase orders for the bus company, for all of our, um, out-of-district placements, so she's getting inundated, and, um, would prefer to do a weekly warrant for the next few weeks until we get, you know, subscriptions renewed and all of those things, so that we're not holding payment. Is that all right with the committee? And what she can do is just email and let you know when it's ready for signature?
I'll try to make the time with my new job to get down there and get them signed.
All right, so, everybody have a chance to look at the meeting minutes?
Yes.
Any changes? I did not see anything.
Yeah, one small change.
Okay.
Okay, I guess I, where, it talks about the, uh, playground, uh, the resurfacing. In here, it says it was completed, um, when it hadn't been completed at that time, so it got updated at some point, and...
It was me in editing the notes?
Yes.
I corrected it because it had been finished, but the meeting, they should reflect the meeting, and it hadn't been completed at that time, so...
Exactly.
Okay.
We should do the challenge as a punishment for that, with the school committee.
There you go.
In all fairness, I'm not the one that taught that.
Oh, okay.
Jeff taught that, so we'll fix that for the meeting.
Compliment has been rescinded, so that's disclosure.
You can't, you can't change that.
Yeah, we can still approve it, so we need a vote on, a motion on that?
So, uh, make a motion?
Approve them with the change that would read Freeman Kennedy is still in need of repair.
Yes, let that change.
I second the motion.
Call favor?
Aye.
Passes? All right, so then, all right, we need to figure out next school meeting, date.
That'll be the first Tuesday of October, right?
Yes.
That would be the first.
Yes, because, uh, Tuesday falls on, all right, so then our other choice is October 14th.[1741.00]